I am here.
Yeah, the something's going on with the mirrors audio.
No, it's, I think it's okay, Joe. We're good.
All right.
Thank you.
Whoever the host is has my video blocked. Can I can? John Marini, can you? Says the host says that the host has my video blocked.
The video Schnuppe blocked. Um, hold on.
There we go.
There you go.
I see your profile picture, but I do not see your video.
Says unable to start video because the host has stopped it.
Maybe understand what's.
And mine too.
And bunch, a bunch of pictures have now shown up, so.
All right, let's.
Okay, try that.
Started.
Yep.
You're on.
Here we go. Hello, everyone. Like to welcome you to the public hearing for Thursday, August thirty first, two thousand and twenty three. Uh, the purpose of tonight's hearing is to solicit public comment regarding the city's proposed capital improvement projects and the related bonding resolutions, uh, which propose the authorization and bonds to support said improvements. And these are outlined in the packet that you've all received or accessed online. So a couple of ground rules before we open this up to the public and please, uh, do your best to adhere to these. Um, as the stated purpose of this meeting is to allow for public comment on this proposed November referendum. Comments tonight need to be limited to this topic. Um, there's a public session at most of our public meetings, including our monthly board of aldermen meetings. So if you plan to comment on items outside the scope of the hearing, please make plans to visit and comment at the appropriate, um, city meeting. Here you're limited to speaking on the topic of the agenda. Uh, as always, we will hold hard, uh, to a hard and fast time limit of three minutes or preferably less for anyone's comments. Whether they're in support of, in opposition of, indifferent, we have to hold you to three minute, uh, maximum. There's a lot of people here, uh, tonight. Um, speakers are limited to one time, uh, speaking, so there's no time giving or gifting. Uh, and remember that this is your opportunity to voice your opinions, uh, which will be preserved in the hearing minutes. This is not a Q and A session. Um, the public hearing will be followed by a joint meeting of the Board of Aldermen and the Board of, uh, Portionment and Taxation. And finally, before speaking, please identify yourself, uh, where you're from, public record, uh, for the public record in your name, uh, for any potential follow up. Uh, thanks. So with that being said, does anyone from the public wish to speak tonight? We'll try to get to everybody. Raise your hands. All right, uh, hand up, uh, Bev Tidmarsh. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, I'd like to address the, uh, well, basically the school building, um, proposal. Uh, and I, I'm probably one of the, the most supportive person of that because I truly see the need for a new middle school. Um, I was surprised though to see it, that it was going to be on the ballot in November lumped in together with all of the other items. Uh, I realize that, you know, it'll be a yes or no vote for each particular item. But you know, as soon as people see the total bottom line of the entire referendum, this is going to be detrimental to the school building proposal. Um, I would have thought that it would have been a separate referendum for that particular item. It was part of the school building commission when we did our Ansonia two thousand and one building project twenty, well, long time ago, twenty some odd years ago. And, um, what we did at that time was we brought in bank people and met with just about any group that we could think of, firehouses, uh, senior citizens, uh, PTOs. Um, and what they did was they gave folks a pretty good estimate of how much more in taxes they were going to be paying if X amount of dollars was bonded. That was very helpful. I haven't seen anything like that with this. Um, as I said, I was very surprised to see that this was going to be on the ballot. Um, and you know, I'm concerned that people will just look at the bottom line and just nix everything that's on there. I'm not going to address the other items because I'm not that familiar with them. But, um, you know, it's extremely important and I'm, I'm sorry to say I'm, I'm disappointed that it wasn't going to be on a separate referendum. Uh, that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I just wanted to comment that, um, and I know the superintendent is here. As are some other school personnel, but, um, there is a, as you know, being on a, a committee, um, there's a heavy reimbursement, uh, of that amount. So that will be communicated to the public, um, throughout and well in advance of, of, you know, a referendum vote.
I think, was it like sixty? It was noted somewhere I read sixty some odd percent?
Sixty eight point six percent is the, is the current reimbursement, yes, for new buildings.
Okay, yeah, because we were years back when the high school was built, it was seventy six and change percent, seventy six, roughly seventy six percent reimbursement rate. Um, and I can't, I can't understand why Ansonia wouldn't even be higher than that, given our, um, you know, fiscal and financial circumstances, depressed community, really. That's what we are.
Well, it'll be up to our state legislators to get more reimbursement and we hope to get more as well.
Correct. Thank you, Sheila.
Yep, thanks, Beth.
I see, um, I see, Dr. DeBakker, do you want to comment on that item specifically while you're here?
Yes, and I, and I thank you for that opportunity. Um, I, I do understand, um, the concern that, that was just shared. We are at a inflection point, um, in our, in our school and for our middle school. We had an existing conditions report, um, completed in two thousand and nineteen that said we had fifteen million dollars with of fire life safety upgrades that needed to be conducted and, um, we put, we are waiting for things to occur with regionalization. They did not happen. And after the conclusion of regionalization, we, we moved forward with our Ed specifications for our high school, I mean, our middle school, I'm sorry, and, uh, sorry, Bev, you got me thinking about your high school project. The middle school, um, what you're looking at, just so everyone knows, um, and I, I don't want to talk about other schools, but I can only tell you about the increasing costs and prices. Um, for example, the new Buckley High School, it took five years to get that to completion and just in those five years it went up sixty one million dollars. And so what we're trying to do right now is number one, um, yes, you're right, um, our construction reimbursement is for general construction is sixty seven point eight seven percent. For renovation is seventy seven point, uh, eight six, uh, percent. Um, Madison just used something that was very interesting that said, um, in the new, there's a new house bill, um, and I believe it's sixty nine forty two. Um, and in that bill, it said that if your renovations um, are more costly than your build like new, if it's more economic for you to build like new, you will get the general, uh, reimbursement, which after speaking with our architect, we should be at the seventy seven point eight six percent, which is very hopeful and once again, looking to see if Madison, which I don't think they're a very depressed community, if they can get an increase of ten percent, where could, uh, Ansonia land? And that's where I believe we are trying to put this through at this juncture to bond for the whole project, get it, get it in the books now and get the money now so we can move forward with the project. I know some people might feel like it's, it's rushed, but it's, um, I, I don't know if I want to come to the same board and ask them for, in two thousand and nineteen, it was fifteen million dollars for fire life safety upgrades. Should I, it's probably about twenty million dollars now, should I ask? Am I going to be head in hand asking for twenty million dollars of fire life safety upgrades? Or would we rather put that twenty million dollars into a, a new building and do that sooner than later? Um, because we've been holding off on those upgrades in hopes of a new school and I, I don't think the waiting could happen any longer. And, uh, I, I know what, um, Bev Tidmarsh, very bright woman, what she said. I know that people want to know all the information. I want to know all the information as well, but sometimes when the iron is hot, this is when we need to strike and this is when we have the time, we have the money. Uh, hopefully we, we just, I don't know what's on the city side. I just know on the board of Ed's side, what you guys have to do on the city side is, um, is, is what you have to do and I'm not going to get into that. So I don't know those numbers and I can't share them. I wish I did. But I know on our, our side, what we're looking at is a building that's ninety years old with major code and fire updates that need to occur. And I, I just don't know how long our students in the community could really wait for, for this to occur. So the, it's, um, it's, it's the time to, to bond and, and get the parcel of land and, and bond for our building. So I appreciate that concern, Bev. I know you guys had a ground, you know, grassroots effort and you really moved it forward. Um, we're in a unique spot and we would like to, you know, get our application through and our bonding, our bonding done as well. Um, but that's why we're, we're here today for the public to discuss it.
Thank you. Um, anyone else from the public who wishes to speak tonight? I see, and Eileen? You're muted.
You.
Name, name and address for the.
Could you hear me?
Yep, name and address for the public record, please.
Okay, Eileen Krugel, thirty six Cedar Street, Ansonia. Uh, first I want to say I strongly agree with Beverly. Um, I did work with her and others on the two thousand and one school project where we did, uh, quite a bit of selling on it. The thing I'm disappointed with on this one so far is there's not really much information. I don't like to get my information from Facebook. Um, you know, reimbursement rates went crazy on there, up to ninety percent or whatever. What would be appreciated, because all the things, I'm, I'm looking at your list now, all the things seem to be really useful and, and need to be taken care of at some point in time, I guess, in the near future. But what really concerns me and I'm, I'm thinking other taxpayers also, is how it's going to impact us. Not just today, and I know this isn't a Q and A, so maybe you could put that out there somewhere, but a breakdown of how it will impact us over time. I know, um, Joe Cassetti answered one of my comments on Facebook saying it shouldn't be any, um, increase in taxes. And I'd like to see that. I'd like to see how that's going to happen. I know other bonds will probably be paid off and that will balance. I understand that whole thing. I know Sheila's working hard getting other grant monies in. Um, but I think, uh, some public information would be very helpful and, uh, thank you for having this tonight. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. And I will mention that there are plans to have public information sessions, um, on this to educate the public. And so, so nothing's happening as far as this goes. We're here to talk about the items that we're hoping to push to the ballot, which the public will then vote on anyways. But in between, there's going to be a lot of education as far as how this works. You know, in, in the, the stuff that's sort of gray, I guess, to, to you.
Yeah. So. Well, there's, there's, there's not a lot, there's not a lot of time between now and getting it on the ballot. You know, so, and, and then voting on it. So the, the sales pitches really have to be now. You know, they have to be out there.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Anyone else in the public who wishes to speak tonight? Um, iPhone. Oh, Tim.
Yes.
Go ahead. Name and address for the public record, please.
Uh, my name is Timothy Holman. I am Superintendent of Public Works, uh, fifteen Fourth Street in Sonia, Connecticut. We have some stuff on the referendum that I like to speak about. If you notice, uh, we have two plow trucks on there. What we need to know about that is they're twenty plus years old. They're rotted out underneath and will have to be taken out of service. So in order to provide the service that we need as far as snowplow, we need to replace those two. As I said before, the twenty plus years, um, those are like two hundred and sixty thousand apiece. We need a bucket truck to cut the limbs and trees in the city, which we don't have a bucket truck now. We have to borrow Derby's or Seymour or anybody that's available. And we get those calls every day. So these are major things that we need to have done as soon as possible. Uh, roadside breast cutter. Uh, we presently have one that's, uh, was bought through the city bid system a years, years ago from the state. Uh, the state got rid of it for a reason and we, we, we took it. Uh, this year alone, it's in August, it's cost me thirty thousand dollars in repairs and it's still not working up to its capacity. So we need one of those. Uh, the scale needs to be replaced. The scale, the scale, what most people don't know, scale can make money and it does make money. Um, the problem with it is it goes into the general fund, so you don't see actually what it makes, but it generates, uh, money into the system and we also have to use it to weigh the tonnage for the garbage trucks and, um, recycling and, and residents that come in to use the facility. So these are things that, uh, are on the agenda that we really need and I hope that we can look at it and and, um, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Um, Jared.
Oh, oh, one more thing. The scale is forty plus years old. Forty plus. So it's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jared Heon, Ten Kylie Lane, Ansonia. Uh, serves as the city's emergency management director and under the public safety tab, I just wanted to speak to a couple of the items, uh, that are on there briefly uh, and, and look to get the public support of this. Uh, obviously supporting all the items on the agenda here, but, uh, I want to speak, speak to a couple that I've been uh, intimately involved in. Uh, the first is, uh, Chief Williams and I and other staff have been involved in the crime surveillance cameras, uh, throughout the town. Um, if you're thinking this is just plopping up a ring camera somewhere, uh, this is not. Uh, we have looked at various, uh, different platforms and we also have to look at connectivity to those platforms. So it's not just the purchasing of a camera, it's a purchasing of a network that we can view these. And there's, uh, some technology, uh, related to this that we decided to, uh, look towards where you can go and do some specific research, uh, called artificial intelligence, uh, which is key in solving, uh, various, uh, crimes, uh, that do occur. So uh, it's not like we're going to be able to sit there and watch all these cameras twenty four seven. We have to have the ability to go back and find, uh, evidence and find suspects and find suspect vehicles, uh, and things like that. And that's what we're looking to do. We're also looking to make it portable so we can target certain areas, uh, where the chief sees uh, certain, to certain statistics climbing and whatnot. So, um, that's the, uh, synopsis on the crime surveillance cameras. It also doesn't stop with the streets. This can expand to the parks. It can expand to city buildings and we can tie everything in. There's also an element of this with a public-private partnership where we can place a device, uh, say in a convenience store that wants to have some extra, uh, police re, uh, response or resources there. Uh, we would have the ability to, uh, link in with their system and it would be a mutually beneficial thing between, uh, the public and the private for security and uh, prevention of crime and also, uh, capturing of crime. Uh, so that was, uh, what I wanted to speak to on the cameras. Um, on the generators, uh, the two generators, uh, well, really there's three ones included in kind of the radio things that, uh, we're looking to do. City Hall does not have backup generation. Uh, we're looking to back that up with, uh, with an emergency power generator, uh, as well as Eagle Hoes and one of our, uh, radio locations, uh, we're looking to do those three, uh, to get them on emergency backup generation. Um, and then as far as the fire department offices and emergency operations center, we used to have an emergency operations center at Two Elm Street. Uh, when the police department moved, unfortunately, we were not, uh, able to fit into that footprint on the third floor. But we have been able to work with some staff and get with the fire department and become creative and find some space on the second floor. Uh, that will work to serve us. It'll save us a lot of money being in the same building as the police, uh, because we're able to utilize the technology that's in there. Uh, even though we're on a different floor, we do have connectivity through that building. Uh, so we're looking for support in outfitting our emergency operations center, which was obviously key through the COVID nineteen pandemic and through various storms. There's a lot of people on here, current and past, that have served, uh, in the E O C that I've been within hours, uh, during various storms. So I know a lot of the folks on here, uh, know how important the emergency operations center is. And the last is, uh, kind of the, the big one on here. Uh, we are in dire need of upgrading our police, fire, EMS and, um, console communications, uh, for our radio system. Uh, both our handhelds and also our backbone infrastructure. Uh, most of it is aged out. Most of it was installed in the early two thousands. Uh, and some people who have been on the meetings before with me, I've used this reference before. If you can remember what a cell phone looked like in two thousand and three and what cell phone service looked like in two thousand and three versus what we have today. Uh, our radios are from two thousand and three. So we're basically using handhelds and a backbone that was installed way back then, uh, that desperately needs to be updated. Something that runs twenty four seven, three sixty five, that is always on, always there for us. Um, you know, we, we need to make sure we stay up to date with that. Uh, those are the ones that I wanted to talk about. I'm obviously in full support of everything and also, uh, any questions, you know, feel free to reach out to any of the board members or anything like that. I'm always available. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else in the public who wishes to speak? Uh, I see two hands up. I don't know which one was first. I'm going to go just, uh, Com-Tar and then Tara, Tara. So start with Com-Tar.
Thank you, Dr. Schu. It's, uh, my name is John Tare. Address is, uh, thirty La Rivera Terrace.
Sorry.
Uh, as you can tell, I'm the, uh, chairman of the Board of Police Commissioners there in the city of Ansonia. And, uh, just to piggyback off of, uh, what Jared was, uh, referring to there with the, uh, crime surveillance, uh, cameras that he's, uh, been discussing with Chief Williams. Now, I had a, uh, sit down meeting with, uh, both him and Chief Williams. I want to say it was probably early spring, late winter time when the, uh, design process was in the infancy and I could actually, uh, speak to its effectiveness with how it is with, uh, crime surveillance and, uh, crime detection here within, uh, the town where I work at right now down in Greenwich. As a matter of fact, when I was, uh, sitting here waiting uh, for a turn to speak, we got a, uh, alert for a, uh, person who was, uh, wanted for an arrest warrant. But, uh, we can't even do anything out of it because it was, uh, it was based out of North Carolina, so it's non-extraditable. But it's just those live alerts that we're able to get, you know, at that particular moment of time. And I just get those alerts, uh, directly on my work-related cell phone here. And a lot of our officers who are out in the road right now have access to those links where we could get it immediately and start coordinating a, uh, plan to, uh, flood the area and, uh, try to surround the individual and take them into custody. And, you know, just because, you know, we're down in Greenwich, uh, just doesn't mean that we're immune to crime down here. Unfortunately, you know, we get it in here as well. We have a lot of individuals that come here from, uh, the tri-state area. Uh, with, uh, issues for, uh, doing credit card theft, uh, financial crimes, uh, automobile thefts. And a lot of that stuff is tied in, you know, to the alerts that we receive on there. And, uh, some of the facets that we're able to use with the, uh, crime surveillance system, we could use as, uh, with the identifying vehicles um, in the area that we may have a possible lead on and, uh, stuff like that has been very helpful with us for, uh, advancing our investigations and, uh, bringing them to a close.
Thank you. Um, next was, uh, Tara had your hand up. You still want to speak? Yep. I think you're muted. Or no, you're not muted, but, uh, I didn't hear anything come out of your mouth. Those that you're connecting to audio. But now. Say, can you say something? We'll see if your, if your audio is coming through. All right, well, well, I see your note here. Okay, we'll skip you and go to the next. Um, next hand up I saw was, um, where was it? Was it page two? Uh, Alex?
Evening, Sal, it's Harrison, Chief of the Ansonia Fire Department. I'm in support of the referendum and I want to briefly talk about public safety and what my items mean to the fire department. As, uh, Jared had mentioned, the radios as well as the infrastructure for the radios for the fire police and in, in arms. Uh, just to let people know is that fire department radios are out of date. They stopped manufacturing them in twenty, two thousand and fifteen. We're using radios that are no longer supported by Motorola and parts are, are non-existent. We are looking everywhere we can to buy parts to just keep these rigos going. When these radios break and the infrastructure breaks, which he had alluded to that's twenty years old, which should have been replaced every ten years. Uh, when that system goes down, there's no way to communicate with the fire department to dispatching to a fire. Potentially, possibly the same goes, goes in hand with the police and the ambulance unless there's backup systems. Uh, so that is a very important topic that we need to, uh, update our radios and our infrastructure. The other thing is about the three, uh, fire trucks. One rescue truck, one ladder truck, one engine. The engine is from nineteen ninety seven. Currently that fire truck is twenty six years old. NFPA, which regulates the fire department, states that after twenty five years of service, the fire truck should be taken out of service and can no longer be used. We're at twenty six years. Hopefully this referendum is passed and we could go buy a new fire truck in November. The problem with that is, once we put, we're looking at a three-year turnaround before this fire truck is built, which now puts that twenty six-year-old fire truck at twenty nine years old. The ladder truck is a two thousand and six. We're coming close to twenty years. And the rescue truck is two thousand and three, which we are at twenty years. Rescues and ladders have a slightly, uh, different shelf life and they have to be replaced at twenty years. Um, these three trucks are very important for our community in this, in the functions that they perform. Each truck is very unique and very different. We have other fire engines that would assist this fire engine, however, with the rescue and the, and the ladder, they're very unique. When we have a, a major incident and I'm going to hypothetically say that downtown, there's a fire, we need to rescue people out of the second, third floors. Ground ladders would be sufficient. The ladder trucks are the way to go. We have one fire truck. We're calling for Derby and Seymour to assist us. We might have two or three fire trucks there. That's probably still not going to be enough for the rescues that we might have to perform for a large occupancy building. So I, I am, uh, showing our support and wishing that everybody votes yes in the referendum in November for the new, uh, piece of equipment for the fire department as well as the ambulance in the uh, police department as well as everything else in the referendum. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next hand up I see is Mike.
Thank you, Josh. If I could just talk a few minutes about the, uh, ambulances that are on the referendum. Um, just to let the public know, all of our ambulances are from two thousand and seventeen or prior with our oldest ambulance being in nineteen ninety nine. Uh, at this point, the average life expectancy of an ambulance is approximately eight to ten years. And as Alex said, with the build time for fire trucks, ambulances are similar. They expect anywhere's up to a three-year delivery time from data purchase. That being said, that would put all of our ambulances at just about the life expectancy. Since March, ARMS has been dealing with major, major issues, um, for vehicle repairs. We have not had all of our vehicles in service since that time, uh, sometimes being down to only two ambulances, one of which being our nineteen ninety nine as our second out the door. Uh, all of our vehicles have now run out of warranty. So any of the repairs that we are incurring at this point going forward are all coming right out of our lines. And unfortunately, the repairs are just mounting. They are all major, major issues and we are working to get them back at this time, but we are in dire need to start replacing the fleet and being able to continue doing the jobs that we're there to do.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Um, Tom, Tom Rocket? And then Anthony. I've had Anthony next.
Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you very much. Tom Brock, athletic director, Ansonia High School. Full support of the referendum, specifically want to speak to the fields. The field, what, just to give everyone kind of layout, what it would be, would be to turf Nolan Field as we know it, the football field. Leave all the bleachers as is. Move the baseball field to where the practice fields are. It'd be a state of the art, beautiful, beautiful. Baseball field, batting cages, bleachers, you know, everything the kids deserve. It would be to add parking. Parking is an issue up there. So there'd be some parking added back where kind of the old softball field closest to Waukegan used to be. And then going over to Charger Field, where on Prindle Ave, where the soccer field is, we would turf that and make it a multi-use softball and little league field. So really, we try to take care of every sport in town. The bottom lot there in Prindle Ave would become parking, obviously, if you have a soccer game and then a five. And, you know, youth coming up at night or little league or softball, whatever's going up there, we're going to need more parking. So it'd add parking, it would add lights up there. I think it'd be a huge upgrade for the community, really help us get kids back on athletic fields and keep us, you know, kind of going, which we're seeing all surrounding towns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is Anthony.
Thank you, Josh. Anthony DeLucio, forty-seven Berkshire Road, Assistant Fire Chief, Ansonia Fire Department. Obviously, the fire chief handled, mostly speaking for the fire department, I'm going to talk a little, something different. For those of you who don't know, who's going to see this, the Ansonia Fire Department is a hundred percent volunteer, eight hundred and eighteen calls last year, seven hundred and sixty-seven calls the year before, around seven hundred and eighteen the year before that. We're busier and busier every year. You could drive down Main Street, you could see all the people. Who has to protect those people? Police, fire, EMS, Public Works, Road with the Roads, everything. This should be a no brainer as far as emergency communication, fire trucks, so on and so forth. Like Ms. Tinmar said, I'm only going to talk about the fire department. That's what I'm a hundred percent confident about with what I'm saying. And that's my knowledge. Years ago, we used to have the fire alarms that went in. People used to hear it, used to see the activity at a fire department. Nowadays, it's phones, it's radios, outdated radios, may I add, pagers that people don't even see what we do. It's incredible the amount of calls I go on. People think we're a paid department. We're there two, three, four minutes protecting the people of this city. This is an obvious no brainer for the public. Anybody in the public that wants to get ahold of me, contact City Hall. They have my number. I'll show you around the fire. Excuse me. I'll show you around the fire department. I'll show you our fire trucks. It's the wear and tear. It is what it is. We, we have an obligation to protect the residents and the commuters in this city, and that's what we do. It's common sense, people. Get ahold of City Hall. They could get ahold of me and I'll be happy to show you around. Remember, it's a twenty-seven year old fire truck, seventeen and a twenty. That's served this city and the surrounding communities perfectly. So it is what it is. Takes, you know, you gotta spend money to keep things going. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak tonight? Tara, you have your, your audio back?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I listed the questions in the chat just in case you couldn't, but Tara Kolikowski, fourteen Feral Drive, Ansonia, Connecticut. So I'll start with the first question that I, that I typed out. Why is the Ansonia Animal Shelter listed as expansion of animal shelter and not new animal facility? It should be, and also it should be a standalone item for the residents to vote on, not lumped in with eleven other items. It seems like to get the animal shelter, we have to, the residents are handcuffed to vote for everything else. And I'm not saying everything else isn't needed, but that should be a standalone item because it's, it's, it's been needed for twenty years in Ansonia. The next question is five point one million dollars for road repairs? The cities received monies from the state and federal government. Where has the, where has that money gone? And that was supposed to be used for those road repairs? Three, why is the sale of the W P C A not put out to referendum for the citizens to vote on? This is a crucial service for the city of Ansonia and the residents should have a vote on it. And it, for it to be kind of put under the radar is absolutely a disservice to the residency in Sonja and it's disrespectful. Fourth, who's going to oversee all the bonding projects? We cannot afford to have even one project go over budget. The police station was crucial. We needed a police station, but it went over budget. Who was in charge of that? Did we have a project manager? How much did it go over budget? Do we have things written for every, every bond proposal that's in there, every project? If it goes over budget by four percent or five percent, you know, will the construction companies, we have to keep them on task. We can't afford to have anything go over budget. And yes, everything's needed in in these bond projects. I understand wholly that they're needed. I've sat where you sat. But you're asking the residents to balance budgets based on irresponsible, financial irresponsibility of every alderman, corporate counsel, and the mayor. And out there bonding for over a hundred million dollars be- because there's a line item in this last, in in this last budget that said five million dollars in anticipated income should be criminal. Never has a budget by the city of Ansonia ever had a line item that said five million dollars in anticipated income. I don't know how you could do that in all good conscience. I just, it's unbelievable. Lastly, again, I can't stress enough, W P C A should not be sold without going out, without going to referendum. And we're more than sixty days out. You can add that to the referendum if I'm not mistaken. Eileen can probably, you know, comment on that if there's enough time to add that. But it's, it's a facility that we own, we put a lot of money into it. And just because it's a shell game with finances in this administration, you want to sell it to balance the books. My humble opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from, from the public who wishes to speak tonight? There's three pages. I'm just scrolling through to see if I see hands. Yep, Bill.
Yes, Josh, you can hear me, I presume.
Yep.
Good. Okay, just a couple of thoughts. I remember listening to the board meeting, the last meeting you had, and Mr. Miller said that at the end of this month, he'd have some budget suggestions and, and, and plans of action. And then this showed up as a special meeting. No, no other hint that it was coming down the pipe and then a hundred and thirty million dollars had a tendency to make me cough a little bit to say other things. But it seems like an awful lot of money that we're bonding. And as the different people have spoken tonight, wondering why we're bonding for twenty years, items like ambulances that have a life expectancy of what, seven years? Or, or whatever, whatever it was, the scale, Timmy says it's forty years old. Okay, it's served us well for forty years old. But running a multimillion dollar business and with an item that can be a generator of cash, you would think it would be built into a long-term budget so that could be replaced on the planned scheme of things rather than that it'd be chasing our tail between our legs and, and running to referendum and hoping that we can get this money going. It just, it seems like a lot of things are being packaged in this one one item. And as I understand it, the meeting is to follow this meeting. And if it approved tonight, it's a done deal and this is what's going to hit the board on November election. Wow, it doesn't give folks an awful lot of time to think about it unless you guys have had thought time, you know, ex parte, so to say. And even though the charter, you know, says the board of apportionment has fifteen days to mull the situations after it comes from the Board of Aldermen. I don't quite understand what that meant. I'll be honest with you, but it seems like, you know, the, the way we run things here is everybody's going to sit down and fifteen minutes later pass a motion and it's a done deal and you have to ask, where's the thought going? Now at a hundred and thirty-one million dollars or whatever, you know, it's causing a lot of people to have to think. And the building commission for the school, has it ever met? Has it ever met to talk about the hundred million dollar bond issue that we want to spend? The recreation commission that was created specifically to recommend recreation improvements and, and the like. Have they been consulted about ten million dollars per turf field? Have they even been brought into the process? Don't quite understand it. It'd be nice to have a turf field, but you still gotta have a place for the geese. A private joke, but people that practice on the football field know what that meant. It's, it's something that we've got to think about very hard. I don't know if it's important to have it November because there's a hell of a lot of decisions you guys are going to have to be making in a very, very short period of time. And I don't know if you're doing the city justice or yourselves for that matter. But in any case, I wish you well and, and hope you see the light and, and, and do good for all of us in the end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's, it's kind of ironic that you're saying that you're not going to have time, but you're going to have two plus months and it's going to go to all the voters. So, I mean, that's exactly what everyone's been asking for is that the, the public gets to weigh in and you get to weigh in on everything. So I'll just leave it at that, but thank you for coming. Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Second call, anyone? You spoke already. That was, that's against our rules.
Against the charter rules or the Board of Aldermen rules?
The rules I read at the beginning of the meeting.
I was, I was having trouble getting on. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Was a resident, I can't readdress.
Oh.
Just ask.
Okay. Any, last call, anyone from the public?
Wow.
What were you asking? Did you ask a question that I did that didn't hear? Sorry.
No, I said as a resident, I can't readdress. I can't go back on. I used my three minutes. Like Eileen can't make a comment to answer.
There was, that was laid out there. And like I said, there's going to be, there's going to be opportunities for both education for the public and also everyone gets a, gets a voice.
There's going to be a video out by the mayor and John Marini, the videographer to put this, you know, forward like you do with Halloween and St. Patrick's Day.
Like I said, we, one time to speak. Thanks.
Okay.
Is anyone unique speakers that wants to speak tonight? Last call.
It's the chat part of the minutes.
The stuff that was put in the chat, yes.
Perfect. That's all I need to know.
Thanks. We're just collecting information right now. Thanks. Last call, anyone? All right, let's close this public hearing and leave a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Can you hear me?
All right.
My microphone not working.
Can vote and Board of Aldermen, please stand. We're using the same for the upcoming special. Thanks.
Someone's trying to speak, Josh.
I don't know if my microphone's working. I've been trying to talk.
It's working. I can hear you.
Now it is.
Want to open up the session again for me?
Public session's closed.
So my thoughts on this whole project.
Mr. President?
Uh, we, we close this. I'm trying to speak. They called like nine times for, for comment. Why we should be doing this in person. If technology isn't perfect, we can go back to the old ways.
Why don't you put in the chat?
Let's go back to the
The meeting's adjourned. We're going on to the okay. This is a special meeting.
I'm being silenced.
You're not, but there were like nine calls for, for speakers.
Why don't we do this in person so that the technology works?
What? If you do it in person, then the technology doesn't isn't applicable. What do you, what do you mean?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean.
You can hear me now.
Let's get a pen and paper.
Every other city and municipality is in-person meetings. It is a joke that the city of Ansonia is not an in-person meetings. COVID is over. Everybody goes to City Hall every day. Schools go to school every, students go to schools every day. We should be in-person meetings.
Why are we recording this? This meeting is over.
I just wanted to speak.
Public hearing is over. Hello, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the special meeting, Joint Board of Aldermen, Board of Apportionment and Taxation for Thursday, August thirty-first. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To America and to the Republic, for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Divisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, Trish, can we get a dueling roll call? First the Alderman and then the, and then vote?
Okay. Alderman King.
Here.
Alderman Stowe. Alderman Adamowski.
Here.
Other woman, Tara. Alderman Cassetti.
Here.
Alderman Janetti.
Here.
Alderman Nutt.
Here.
Alderman Hardy. I'm going to say no. Alderman Yalman.
Here.
Alderman Rivers.
Here.
Alderman Mamon.
Here.
President Schurt.
Here.
Alderman Lovinsky.
Here.
Alderman Duranty.
Here.
And for the Board of Apportionment and Taxation, Chairman Cassetti.
Present.
Mr. DeLassio. Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Jaskilka. Mr. Maloney.
Yeah.
Mr. Tai. Mr. Papson.
Present.
Quorum of both boards present.
All right.
Trish, did you get me?
Who? Who, who?
Joe Janetti.
Yes, I did.
You got you, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So the quorum on both. Thanks. So the, the point of this meeting is to consider two resolutions. Before we start on that, I'd like to ask the administration if they have any comments, introduction to, you know, to the, to the documents, whether that's Kurt Miller, John Marini or Sheila. Otherwise, we'll move on to the resolution pieces.
Through you, Mr. Mr. President, I guess I'll go first. I, I just want to address kind of the overall process that we're going to go through. Bond Council Glenn Rebacki is also on the line. Should there be any legal or technical questions to go along specific to this, but, you know, I just want to stress that this vote that will be taken will be to put these questions onto the ballot and asking the residents if they are comfortable with the city moving forward with purchasing these objects. There's, it's not saying that we will definitely be bonding any of these things. It's just simply saying that the residents are supportive of moving forward with the projects. Once we have that approval, at that point, we will sit down and determine the best way to purchase any of these things that the residents vote affirmative for. So not necessarily everything is going to be bonded. We'll use other types of financial instruments to pay for the debt that will be taken on. Some will be lease purchases. Some will be private placements with banks. I heard during the public comment. I heard, uh, during the public comment that someone had some concerns about, you know, purchasing a truck that may have a life expectancy of five years and bonding it out for twenty or thirty years, that, that doesn't happen. Uh, that's something that Bond Council would not even allow. So if you're going to bond things, um, they need to be bonded in a length of time that matches their life expectancy. So for things like schools, roads, uh, you can certainly extend those out to, you know, twenty, thirty years, things like that. But for, for trucks and, and things like that, those are generally shorter durations of time because the life expectancy of those vehicles, um, is certainly not as long. So, once we have the authorizations, at that point, we'll start to look at how we will bring these projects on. Um, some of these projects have extended buildup periods, uh, you know, the things like the fire trucks as an example. We could be three years out until we see a fire truck. Uh, so we certainly would not start in, incurring any of the debt until the vehicles were received. And at that point, uh, we can look at things like lease purchases, we can look at things like private placements. We don't necessarily have to go out to bond for all of these things. So, you know, there's kind of a, a, an art and a nuance to this. We have a financial advisor, we have a bond underwriter, we have a specific bond council. Um, you know, I will work with that team with Mayor Cassetti, um, to, to put these packages together and do so in a way that has the least impact, uh, to residents on their taxes. Now, if you look at our current bond or our current debt profile, uh, we have what's known as declining debt profile. So every year going forward, our debt payments of principal and interest will get lower. So over the next five years, um, our principal and interest payments are going to drop about three hundred and five thousand dollars. And then over the next, uh, five years, it'll drop an additional three hundred and fifty-three thousand. So the job that, you know, myself and, uh, our bond underwriter, our financial advisor and our bond counsel will do to work to continue to work this debt model to keep it in a declining state. Now, that may not be a hundred percent possible, but as things come off and on, uh, other projects and so on and so forth, we should be able to tailor, uh, this, these debt issuances, again, to have the least impact as possible when it comes to, to taxes. You know, there's been a lot of talk about the schools, um, you know, it's, it's a staggering amount to say a hundred million dollars. But the thing that you need to keep in mind is we need to get the authorization to spend that amount of money. That does not necessarily mean that that's what the, the city will be paying for. So if the school has, uh, an eighty percent reimbursement, the school costs a hundred million dollars to build. The city's portion of that, uh, debt payment will be the twenty million dollar purch, uh, twenty million dollar portion, and the state will cover the difference. So again, I, I think we need to be very careful, um, out in the public is, is the things that we're putting out there because I'm seeing a lot of things on, on social media that are just flat out not correct. And I think they're intentionally misleading and that's, that's disappointing because the city has needs. The city needs to continue to reinvest in itself to continue moving forward. And i- it's kind of disingenuous when people are putting intentionally incorrect facts out there. Um, so a, a, again, once we, we have this vote take place, uh, in November, at that point, we'll see what the residents have voted affirmative on. And at that point, uh, the finance team will sit down and we will put a plan together, um, as to how this will come on. Um, and again, that will be done very publicly. Um, that information will need to be put in front of the Board of Aldermen, that, uh, information will need to be put in front of Boat. It will not be done in secret. Um, if we do need to go out to bond, we have to go in front of standard empires, we'll get a bond rating. Uh, we'll do all those different things. And if you look at the last time that this finance team took this city out to bond, it was quite possibly one of the most, um, significant financial events in this city's history. Our, our, uh, bond placement was fifty-five times oversubscribed. That means that people were fighting to buy the city of Ansonia's debt. And that is a very, very important thing and a very big thing for the city. Because again, the more people that are fighting to buy your debt, the better interest rate that you're going to get and also the more bond premium you're going to get. Now, I know people will say that we take that bond premium and we pour it into, uh, filling holes in the budget. We pour it into doing all these crazy things. And a- again, nothing could be further from the truth. Bond premium needs to be used to pay down principal and interest of debt. And if you look in any of our financial statements, if you look at the fund balance, there's a designation in the fund balance specifically for that. And when it's used in the budget, it's specifically listed out exactly what it is. So again, there's, there, there's nothing hitting, there's nothing done in the dark. Um, our debt ratio for the city of, uh, you know, Ansonia is, currently stands at three point seven two percent. You know, S and P likes communities, they say very strong financially stable communities have debt ratios somewhere between six and seven percent. So, uh, to, we have a lot of bonding or debt capacity that the city still has the ability to take on before S and P would even be concerned. So from a financial standpoint, the city is in extremely strong position to take on this debt. It's an extremely strong position to be continuing to reinvest in its future, continuing to reinvest, uh, in its infrastructure, and I don't think there's anything more important than investing in our first responders. Um, you know, those, these are folks that put their lives on the line for us day in and day out, particularly our firefighters who do it for freight. You know, we should certainly, um, be taking that into high consideration. Uh, you know, our public works guys are the ones that are out there plowing snow and, and getting things done so folks can get to work. And of course, the biggest responsibility that we have as a community is making sure that we're educating our kids. And, you know, there is absolutely a need, uh, for this school. There is absolutely a need to provide the first-class education that our kids deserve. You know, we've taken a lot of positive strides in this community, um, o- over the last several years. Um, you know, I think our school system being led by Dr. DeBakto, I think we can all agree is a home run. And we need to make sure we're giving him and our educators the tools that they need to give our kids uh, the best quality education that we can get for them. So, you know, with that, I just wanted to touch on a few of those points. I'll certainly take questions, uh, from any of the members of the board, or either board that may have questions.
Do, do any, yeah, but do any of the Aldermen or, um, Boat members have any questions for Kurt based on his, his, uh, statements or the packet?
Josh, I just have one thing I wanted to mention, if I could. Um, just briefly, you know, I, I, I heard a, a few different comments about things not being separated more. Um, it does, they, these, as I understand it, these are going to appear as five separate questions on the ballot in November, um, and the residents are going to be able to vote yes or no to each, each of those five questions individually. So I just think, no, it's important to clarify that because there, I don't know if there was misunderstanding or, um, people, you know, the, the speakers from the public hearing didn't completely understand that. But these things are going to be listed separately and can be voted on individually.
Thank, thanks for clarifying that, Joe. Also, also wanted to add, it's more cost-effective to go out to bond for all the projects. And also, all of these departments support, will support the new middle school.
Absolutely, and I just want to say thank you to the hard work that I know City Hall staff put into this and, and making sure, uh, this meeting took place, so thank you.
Thank you.
Also, Joe, to follow up on your question as well, or, or the clarification you made, you know, we want the maximum amount of voters to be weighing in on a referendum like this. And so while, you know, separate standalone, um, ballot initiatives might be interesting, they're not going to draw anywhere near the amount of voters as a general election like this November. Uh, and so I think there's a real advantage to having five questions all together and having the maximum amount of Ansonia residents weigh in. Obviously, you know, it's, uh, elected officials who put it together, but it's the, it's the people of Ansonia that we want to hear from and as many of them as possible.
Thanks, John, appreciate that.
And you will, we'll certainly see more, uh, in terms of what Kurt had talked about, you know, that, that educational component, about the impact. And we hear loud and clear, you know, that's the big issue, what is the impact? But, you know, we've already arranged for both presentations and maybe even videos, yeah, um, to explain to the residents exactly how this, um, will impact them financially. Obviously, that's a huge question. I think everyone agrees that these are needed projects, everyone agrees, um, that we want to get these done. And the question is, why do it this way versus put it right into a budget, say, right, a yearly budget? Um, and, and it's simply staff's recommendation that this makes more sense than raising the mill rate immediately to put this into a, uh, you know, a year-to-year budget.
Thank you for the clarification.
And Josh, if I could just a- adjust just a couple more things. Um, you know, number one, any money that is borrowed is used towards the projects. Um, we, we don't borrow and we can't borrow money to pay everyday expenses, it's, it's just not allowed. So, you know, anyone out there that's going to say we're borrowing all this money to fill previous holes, we're borrowing this money to specifically fund budgets going forward, that's just flat out not true because it, because it's not allowed. And another, uh, comment that was made during the public hearing and something that I agree with wholeheartedly is that we need to get some of these things, particularly some of these reoccurring expenses, things like, uh, ambulances and so on and so forth, on some type of proactive program that are actually built into the budget. And if you look at our current debt service, we do have a few things in there now. We've started the process over the last couple of years to add those things into the budget. So, you know, things like now with, with police cars, we don't need to borrow for police cars because it's built in the budget that we're buying two police cars each year and that will continue going forward, having zero impact to the budget. We will be able to structure this budget going forward to continue to address these reoccurring needs as proactive parts of the budget going forward. And it would be, the goal is to get to a place where an ambulance, we can replace an ambulance every five years and be able to do in cash as part of the budget. Not even have to talk about borrowing any money. Fire trucks may be a bigger, bigger ticket item just because they're so expensive. But even a lot of the public works equipment, the goal is to work towards having those built into the budget. So the money's being put aside, so that way when the time comes to change out these pieces of equipment, we have the cash at hand, it's been built into the budget and we're moving, continuing to move the city forward. So I just wanted to clarify a few of those points that were brought up by some of the residents as well during the, the public hearing.
Thank you. Um, Boat members, Alderman members, any other questions for Kurt, City staff, each other? I'm looking around, so just blurt out if you, if you do. All right, so we have two items. Uh, let me find my paperwork here. So, uh, the purpose of the meeting is to, uh, to consider and act upon, uh, the resolutions that are in the packet. Um, the resolution, the first resolution, and I'll just read it because it's, uh, brief. Resolution appropriating one hundred and thirty-two million, six hundred and thirty-two thousand for city of Ansonia capital improvements uh, for twenty-three, twenty-four and authorizing issue of up to that amount, um, bonds of the city to meet said appropriation or such lesser amount if less than all components are approved, impending the issuance therefore thereof, the making of temporary borrowings therefore. So this is ju- basically just, um, you know, whether we have the desire to approve the, the package as, uh, as, as discussed.
Josh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution as you just stated.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Mamon, second by Yaman, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? And Gary, you need to take a separate vote as well? Or no? Or did you guys vote with us? I didn't?
No, no, that was just BOA, if we need to vote, we'll, we'll vote.
Yeah, I would, I would do a separate vote, whether it's necessary or not.
Okay, Trish, can you read off and we'll?
Oh, sure, you want a roll call? It's a motion to adopt the resolution.
Right.
Mister Cassetti.
I need one of my members, uh, make a motion.
Okay.
I will make the motion to.
Thank you, David.
Add the item.
Mister Papson made the motion, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Mister. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mister. Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
All right, and then the second, um, the second one is to consider and act upon, uh, the resolution. This, this is just a re- the resolution providing for a referendum vote for the whole public to be held, uh, on November seventh, uh, twenty-twenty-three regarding resolution, uh, in item number one. So this would be on the, on the, on, I'm guessing, uh, Dave Papson's here, back of the ballot, is that where it appears?
Yes, exactly, so if approved, uh, the five ballot questions would be on the backside of the ballot. Uh, voters would have to turn obviously their ballot over to, uh, cast their ballots or cast their votes. We actually just found out the other night that our poll staff are not allowed to tell them, tell voters to flip their ballot over. So, yes, it will be on the backside of the ballot and I hope as many people vote as possible.
Dave, is there, is there language on the front though that does say turnover for additional questions or it doesn't say anything?
David, this is Beth, can I ask, did you get specific uh, information about that?
Because there have been questions on the front of the ballot in the past.
Um.
In the, in the past, we had them on the front and the back.
We were given from SOTS was just that, uh, our poll staff are not allowed to tell people, uh, tell incoming voters that the questions are on the backside of the ballot. Uh, with regards to the question of, does it say on the ballot if there are questions on the other side? I do not have an answer for that at the moment, I'm sorry for that.
In the past, Dave, uh, there have been questions on both sides. Um, and if there was no room on the front side, it goes over to the backside. So we can get confirmation on that, but I think the short answer is, you know, possibly both, possibly front and back.
Right, because the five, it depends on how many, and it's pretty lengthy questions, so they're going to fit what they can on the front and then the rest goes on the back.
That'd be preferable by my standards.
Perfect, thank you.
You know, it's the printer's decision, uh, we have nothing to say about it.
Yeah, and I think that all comes from Atkins, so, um, they, they are the ones that make the deciding factor on that.
Right, because it has to be letter-sized, you can't have a legal-sized ballot because they don't fit in the machine.
Well, sometimes they do, in some cases they do, but it's just a matter of how the memory cards are programmed, if they can be programmed for the legal ballot. I, I don't think there's been a legal ballot during my tenure as registrar, but I think that has happened before.
I don't recall ever seeing one, but I know they have put them on both sides.
I think it was during one of the state elections, it wasn't the presidential year, I want to say it was either, uh, twenty-eighteen or maybe twenty-two's was, no, twenty-two's wasn't. I'll have to look into it, but we'll, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, thank you, thanks for the clarification.
Dave. I make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Mamon, uh, any further discussion? All right, all in favor of passing this?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, uh, opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries, Gary?
Uh, do we need to vote on that or?
We do, Gary.
Okay.
The motion would be to adopt the resolution providing for a referendum vote to be held on November seventh regarding the resolution in item one.
Okay, one of the members can. One of the members can make a motion.
I'll make the motion to send it out to referendum on November seventh.
Thanks, Dave.
Second.
Mister Papson and Mister Maloney. Any discussion, questions or anything? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Who, you're opposed? Or you're in favor? John Maloney.
Oh, I said.
Was that all of you?
Thumbs up, I guess he's in favor.
I'm going to call your names, Mister Cassetti is in favor?
Yes.
Mister Gonzalez?
He's here.
I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you, Mister Maloney.
Yes.
And Mister Papson.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Very good, way to go.
All right, how about, how about it, Rivers?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Cassetti, motion by Rivers, second by Cassetti, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Good weekend.
A good night and, and holiday weekend.
Good work tonight, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.